Thank you very much and good evening everyone and welcome to the Milton Select Board Meeting of Wednesday, December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. On July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand and three. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, under this protocol, all votes taken will be by roll call. Uh, we have a robust agenda this evening, uh, so our emphasis will be on focus and brevity. We have an executive session toward the end of the meeting, from which we will adjourn, and then we will convene the trustees of the Governor's Stotan Trust. At this time, I'd like to introduce, uh, the members of the select board. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving as chair, and Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Richard Wells, Secretary.
Member Bradley.
Aaron Bradley, member.
Roxanne Musto, member.
Thank you, and, uh, our town administrator Nicholas Milano.
Good evening.
And Executive Assistant to the Select Board, Lyndon Napoli. Kevin Freitag, Town Council, is also with us this evening. Can you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, and indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all. As we begin, uh, this evening's meeting, on behalf of the Milton Select Board and the Office of the Select Board, I want to extend to, uh, you a very happy holiday season and a safe and healthy New Year. It is our honor and pleasure to work together to help Milton accomplish those goals that mean the most to you and to our community family. I also want to thank all those in service to the town, its employees and volunteers for their many contributions during the past year. We look forward to collaborating with you throughout the New Year. At this time, we'll go to public comment. We have up to fifteen minutes on the agenda for public comments, with up to three minutes for a speaker. Our primary focus would be on agenda items, and, um, we appreciate the decorum with which our citizens participate, each of whom is asked to provide their name and address. So this time, let us see if we have any attendees seeking to speak. I see one hand, it is Mr. Chris Hart. Chris? You'll be promoted.
Can you see me? Thank you very much, Chris Hart, fifty-five Woodland Road. Um, thank you very much for, uh, allowing me to speak and, uh, happy holidays to all of you. Uh, thanks for your work on the eve of the holiday season or during the holiday season. Um, so my comments center around, um, the, uh, town, the select board's, uh, process of reviewing committee membership and committee appointments, which I know is on the agenda, uh, today. Um, I, I had understood that work and was very pleased, um, when the, that work was discussed, uh, early, earlier this year, uh, because I understood it to be work of inclusion, trying to figure out how to make the committees more inclusive, uh, and reflect the town itself, and that was consistent with the work that the Equity and Justice Committee had done and the specific recommendations in that report around finding ways to make, um, to make the committees more inclusive, and that's, that's a wonderful effort, and I, and I'm very happy that the select board is engaging in it. Um, but the reason I wanted to speak is that, um, in at least one recent and perhaps more, uh, recent select board meetings and, and something I read in the Milton Times recently, there seems to be some discussion about cutting committees. Um, and that strikes me as not only, uh, intention with the idea of making committees more inclusive, uh, but also the wrong direction for the town. Um, why are committees important? Committees are important for, for at least two reasons. One, as wonderful as you all are and knowledgeable and experienced, you're only five people, uh, and that's true for any select board, uh, except for ones where there were only three people. Uh, and so your knowledge, your, your eyes and ears, uh, can only cover so much ground. Uh, and so the committees allow the select board to see and hear and know far more than you could just by yourselves about, uh, anything going on in the town, whether it's bicycles or traffic or equity injustice or name the topic, um, they, they fulfill a necessary role, um, to educate and inform. The second is that it, it creates a great deal of engagement. Um, we've talked a lot recently in the most recent town meeting about of engagement in a democracy, and it strikes me that committees, uh, provide exactly that, greater engagement. Why, I don't quite understand the, the discussion around cutting committees, and, and let me offer a few things that I've thought about, and then I'll close my comments, um, and why I don't think they quite work. One possibility is that they're expensive, and of course, that doesn't work because town committees are volunteers. Uh, another is that, um, uh, is maybe, maybe there's a small government philosophy around this. I'm not sure that makes sense though, because usually when we talk about small government, we're talking about it at the federal level. We want more at the local level, we want more people engaged at the local level. Um, so maybe the third, um, is that, um, uh, there, there should be, uh, some kind of limit, there should be a number, we should be going with the average of, of other towns, but that strikes me as just having a certain number for the sake of it, um, as opposed to having a good reason behind it. Maybe the last is that they're, they're just doing a bad job. Um, and if there are any committees that are doing a bad job, then it strikes me that the select board has the power to hear from them and know what they're doing and to have them do a better job. And maybe on a case-by-case basis, some committee has, has lost its, uh, raise on debt and, and there's a good reason to disband it, and that should be done on a case-by-case basis, but not because, uh, we want to simply cut committees for the sake of it. So my hope is that in the work the select board does, you'll see how important committees are, uh, and we'll make them, continue to make them as inclusive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, seeing no other hands from the attendees, uh, we'll, uh, return to the agenda of the business at hand, and we are fortunate to have with us, speaking of committees, uh, Rob Lavash, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, so could we promote Rob, please?
Um, but the reason I wanted to speak is that, um, in at least one recent and perhaps more, uh, recent select board meetings and, and something I read in the Milton Times recently, there seems to be some discussion about cutting committees. Um, and that strikes me as not only, uh, intention with the idea of making committees more inclusive, uh, but also the wrong direction for the town. Um, why are committees important? Committees are important for, for at least two reasons. One, as wonderful as you all are and knowledgeable and experienced, you're only five people, uh, and that's true for any select board, uh, except for ones where there were only three people. Uh, and so your knowledge, your, your eyes and ears, uh, can only cover so much ground. Uh, and so the committees allow the select board to see and hear and know far more than you could just by yourselves about, uh, anything going on in the town, whether it's bicycles or traffic or equity injustice or name the topic, um, they, they fulfill a necessary role, um, to educate and inform. The second is that it, it creates a great deal of engagement. Um, we've talked a lot recently in the most recent town meeting about of engagement in a democracy, and it strikes me that committees, uh, provide exactly that, greater engagement. Why, I don't quite understand the, the discussion around cutting committees, and, and let me offer a few things that I've thought about, and then I'll close my comments, um, and why I don't think they quite work. One possibility is that they're expensive, and of course, that doesn't work because town committees are volunteers. Uh, another is that, um, uh, is maybe, maybe there's a small government philosophy around this. I'm not sure that makes sense though, because usually when we talk about small government, we're talking about it at the federal level. We want more at the local level, we want more people engaged at the local level. Um, so maybe the third, um, is that, um, uh, there, there should be, uh, some kind of limit, there should be a number, we should be going with the average of, of other towns, but that strikes me as just having a certain number for the sake of it, um, as opposed to having a good reason behind it. Maybe the last is that they're, they're just doing a bad job. Um, and if there are any committees that are doing a bad job, then it strikes me that the select board has the power to hear from them and know what they're doing and to have them do a better job. And maybe on a case-by-case basis, some committee has, has lost its, uh, raise on debt and, and there's a good reason to disband it, and that should be done on a case-by-case basis, but not because, uh, we want to simply cut committees for the sake of it. So my hope is that in the work the select board does, you'll see how important committees are, uh, and we'll make them, continue to make them as inclusive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, seeing no other hands from the attendees, uh, we'll, uh, return to the agenda of the business at hand, and we are fortunate to have with us, speaking of committees, uh, Rob Lavash, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, so could we promote Rob, please?
Good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you for being with us, Rob, uh, and thank you for, uh, your work on the Community Preservation Committee as its chair. Please extend our appreciation to all the members of your committee when you are next gathered with them, and also we should probably, uh, remember all of the members of our community who made the Community Preservation, uh, Act, uh, a reality in the town of Milton within the past couple of years.
Yes, thank you, so let me, I'm gonna share my screen and can you all see? Can you all see my, uh, screen? All right, great. Um, so I'd like to go over tonight, um, just an update on what our, uh, CPC has done over the last year, as well as a look to what our committee will be, uh, doing in the, in the new year and the two thousand, uh, twenty-three fiscal year. So just quickly, uh, review of agenda for tonight will be to review our CPC plan, the CPA plan, the, uh, CPA application process. I'll review quickly the, the CPC timeline and future schedule, our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three CPC budget, um, the fiscal two thousand and twenty-three CPC eligibility applications, which we have received fourteen in total. Um, we were very pleased with the amount of energy and, and positivity around the, the CPC, um, application process, so we received one application from community housing, five applications from the community preservation, and eight applicants for open space and recreation. Um, eleven of those fourteen have, were given approval to proceed to a funding application, and those approvals letters were sent with comments and conditions, and so I'll review that, um, on later slides. So just, first, I'd like to just go over the, the, in our inaugural year, uh, the committee was tasked with creating a CPA plan, and for those who haven't seen it, it's a forty-three-page document that's, that's put up on the, the town's website. Um, really, that was to provide the goals, opportunities, and planning for CPA funds. The three categories that, that can be funded in town, um, are community housing, historic preservation, and open space and, and recreation. Um, and what our committee has done over that twelve-month process was to meet with the town committees, including the Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Affordable Housing Trust, Parks and Recreation, um, as well as, uh, have a public, uh, meeting and also garner, uh, public input as well into this plan. Um, and lastly, it's really to establish, establish an application process for, um, you know, putting out CPC funds. So getting more into the CPA application process, our committee has a, has set up a two-step process. Towns, it's kind of up to the town whether, how they want to do their application process. It's typical that you either do have a one-step or a two-step, our committee has elected for the two-step, and really that was to, um, create a little bit ease on app, on applicants, and so the eligibility application, what you see on, what you see on your left, that was more of a simple form for applicants to fill out and then kind of come before the committee to present to the committee. We've had two, um, earlier this fall, um, of applicants coming before the committee to explain their projects. Um, and then what we've done from those public, um, presentations was as a committee, um, go and review, review those applications to deem whether they were eligible or not for CPA funding. Um, we have, as I mentioned, um, gotten back to eleven, uh, applicants and have put them forth that voted to go move on forward to the funding applications, which you'll see to your right, that's a little bit more involved, a little bit more details are involved with that. Um, and right now, where the process that we are in, we will be getting those applications back just after the holidays. And then just a, a quick note for, that, these are all for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three projects. For fiscal two thousand and twenty-four projects, eligibility applications will open again in March two thousand and twenty-three, so not too far away to, uh, for applicants to apply for, uh, funding of the next round. Um, so just quickly going over our timeline and, and kind of where we are. Um, really, as I mentioned, our, our first goal was to create that CP, was to create the CPA plan, which we finished in September. We opened the eligibility applications was in July first, so it's around three-month process um, of, of the eligibility applications which are open, they closed October first. Our, um, committee met on two different occasions to review the eligibility applications. Um, and then November sixteenth is when our committee, uh, got together and recommended applicants to proceed to the funding application. Here we are today, December twenty-first, um, on our timeline, and as we look forward to the two thousand and twenty-three, um, January thirteen is, thirteenth is when the Community Preservation Project's funding applications will be due. So we're gonna have a very similar process, we, we will have two more dates on the calendar for applicants to come back before the committee um, and present their, uh, funding applications and a little bit more details, anything that they've changed and, and the, what the committee asked for, for conditions on their, um, applications, they'll come before our committee, and then our committee will meet on February twenty-second to review and recommend, um, what applicants should be funded. And then March and April will be the time period when we will draft articles and motions under the articles to be sent to you, as well as the, uh, warrant committee, and then of course, May, May is the Springtown meeting, that's when our, uh, CPA will be, be recommending to town meeting for appropriation. And then the, the goal is in, in July that grant agreements with successful applications will be sent out. Um, so just looking at the fiscal two thousand and twenty-three budget, um, our first year that CP, the CPA funds were collected was fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, that was around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The fiscal two thousand and twenty-three, um, budget was just a little over a million dollars. That includes a state match, the first year you're not eligible for the state match, so the second year we are, so this is estimated right now, I think there is another round that the state is going to be giving more money to, so um, at the end of this, you, you kind of breaks out, what we need to do is there's a minimum amount of a bucket that we need to spend on community housing, historic preservation, open space and recreation, which is ten percent, uh, for each category, and then the remaining budgeted reserve of the sixty-five percent can be used on any of the categories. So all in all, you add that all up and the total available funds is around one point seven three million dollars. And then I just have down at the bottom, if you were to equally distribute that across the three buckets, that would be around five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, um, for each bucket. Doesn't mean that our committee has to commit one way or the other to, to these buckets, but you'll see in a second why I, why we've divided it up that way. Um, so the eligibility applications that we received in October, um, there, these are the fourteen that were listed here. Um, so the one that we've got for the, the housing was Affordable Housing, the town's Affordable Housing Trust. They did request a third of the money, um, knowing I think that there's these two other categories looking for the committee to fund, so that was the five hundred and seventy-six thousand, uh, dollars that they requested. There was, there was five, uh, historic preservation projects that came to the committee. Two unfortunately were deemed, uh, ineligible for funding. Um, unfortunately, the, the Milton Library Digital Preservation, um, application was deemed ineligible because you can't, uh, you, you can't preserve to digital, you can't preserve, you know, physical artifacts to a digital thing. Um, and so that, that really was deemed ineligible, um, unfortunately, and then the Milton Fire Headquarters, because that project had already been funded and that project was underway, we couldn't supplant funds, so that unfortunately, um, as well couldn't be funded, uh, this year. Doesn't mean that future projects, something like the Atherton Firehouse, um, is a historic firehouse as well, that may be eligible later on down the line. Um, so we, we wanted to get that back to the fire headquarters, because we know that they had a, uh, you know, a big, a big stake in, in getting the CPA passed as well, so, um, it's just kind of unfortunate timing on that one. And then one project that also was deemed ineligible that I know the select board has seen was the Squanton Gateway Project, and that's really just because of the type of project it is, it's, it's, it was a, you know, redoing sidewalks, and so even though maybe a, a minimal amount of that project could be funded, for instance, some of the, the trail signage or, or things like that could be funded, um, it was deemed ineligible, uh, for, because most of it couldn't be funded. So I will get to the, the last slide was really the, the fiscal two thousand and twenty-three applicants moving forward to our funding applications, are these eleven that you see up on the screen? So the first one is the Affordable Housing Trust, which, um, they are looking for, for that third of the amount of the money. Um, they have a number of priorities and goals, um, to, that they've put forth to the committee. We've asked them for additional information on, on that, and that's what they would be responsible for, back to the, to the committee on, on, uh, providing us with the information that they would get for this funding. Um, the Forbes House is another one, the, um, Carriage House, which you see on your, on your, on, on this picture right here, the, the barn, as well as the two outbuildings. They are looking to, um, a historic preservation project on those. And so that's one, that's another project that they're looking for money. Um, it's a big project cost of around two million dollars. Um, so we know with our budget that we have, we've asked them to kind of condition that out, look at different ways to phase it or look for smaller amounts of money, um, for that and come back to us, um, in this next funding round. The town lockup, which is a, um, the building right on the left side here, on the, on the bottom here, which obviously used to be the Old Town Jail, I think the, the Yacht Club, um, is a current, um, current occupant of this building. Um, that is looking for money for, um, historic preservation of the, of the exterior wrapper, and I think the total um, project cost of that is around a half a million dollars, they're looking for a kind of a first phase on that to rehabilitate that building. The Spalding Garden, um, masonry stabilization, for anyone who doesn't know about the, where the Spalding Garden is, that's off of Highland Street, kind of in the middle of town, it's a garden that was a Fletcher Steel Garden, um, where the old mansion was, and, and the garden today is, um, taken care of by the Milton Garden Club. And so they are looking to, for some funding for the masonry as well as, uh, you know, some of the brickwork there. Um, and so there's a number of conditions placed on that project that we're asking for them to get back to us in the funding. And then the last category for open space and recreation, um, is a number of projects, which, um, the Turner's Pond, Turner's Pond, which everyone knows that, that path that goes around there, they're looking to improve um, and make some improvements around the, the path itself, adding benches and, and things like that. The Milton's Farmers Market at the Wharf Park, as well as Peverly Playground, is more of a planning exercise, so there's a little, you know, smaller sum of money, but this is really looking to, uh, for planning to see, um, whether or not, uh, what to do with the Farmers Market at the Wharf Park, as well as the Pever, Peverly Playground is a playground for the western part of, uh, Milton, which really the, the, there isn't a playground over on the west side of town, um, so that one is, there's about a forty thousand dollar, um, CPA funding requested for that, uh, playground in Peverly Park, which is right next to, uh, Pope's Pond and the next, the next application, Pope's Pond Pedestrian Bridge. Um, right now, anybody who's, who walks around Pope's Pond knows that the trail doesn't completely close, and the, the pedestrian bridge that's, um, being put forth by the Conservation Commission, um, there is a hundred thousand dollar grant right now that, um, was used for, um, I believe, I believe the engineering and the planning for, for that bridge. Um, and so they're asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to, to connect that bridge across the pond, and then that trail would be completed around there, so it'll be really important, I think, to, to the committee is to understand that, you know, how this pedestrian bridge will be set up and how the playground as well is um, integrated into the design of that, but we were pretty excited by those two applications. And then the last three applications, there was one for a Milton, about Milton American Baseball at, at, uh, Mary Lane Playground, um, and then the, the next one is, um, pickleball courts, and I think, even though they're looking, you know, there's a very energetic group and they're looking to expand pickleball courts through Milton, we are also, um, responding to them that, you know, we really need to look and plan for where these pickleball courts can go, so we, you know, we have, they are on to the next funding round, but we are also going to steer them to, to try to figure out some planning on that and to figure out where pickleball courts could go in town. And then the last, um, application is the LED stadium lighting upgrade, this is at Guile Field for anyone um, who knows, most of the, the stadium lighting at the, at our parks and, and by the high school. Um, right now, there, the lighting isn't LED, um, and so that project would really be a sustainable project, it'll save the town money over the long run, um, by putting LED, uh, light heads on the, uh, light fixtures that are all over our fields on that side. Um, and so that's the last, um, that's the last project. Um, so I, done for you tonight, if anybody has questions, I know I went over a number of, of things, so I can go back to any of the slides for anybody who has questions.
Well organized and presented, thank you, Rob. Uh, the floor is open to questions or comments to members of the select board.
Mr. Chair, I think my hand is up, but I'm still looking at, um, Rob's screen, so I can't see you.
Okay, I can't see you, go ahead, Mr. Wells.
Uh, that's okay, I can, I can stop shitting as well.
No, I gotta, I gotta get back. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank Rob, I just, I'm, you know, I was, um, fortunate to go to a couple of meetings. Um, this is the first time, uh, you know, brand new from Milton. So it'll be interesting to see what happens going forward, but this is definitely, um, uh, something that can enhance some things in town that really need to be addressed, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Rob, uh, just a question on timing of the articles for town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, and I wonder if, if, and you can probably work with Nick and with, uh, with county, town council on this, but, um, the warrant committee may need a placeholder sometime in January, uh, just so they can, they know what's coming. You may not have the, 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 the specific amounts, but, but just so you have some placeholder, so you can get them going, at least on some of this, and, um, and then hopefully, and, and again, maybe you've already thought about this, but you might want to, to the extent you can move up your, your timing to get the articles baked sometime in February, that I think that would help just in terms of timing.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, yeah, I, I actually, I think the committee was a little bit behind the eight ball, because we had to do our CPA plan this year, so we're very much in a rush, and so I, I do have a two thousand and twenty-four agenda, um, and I backed it all down three months. Um, and so I, I think we have a pretty good, um, you know, pretty good schedule. And so I think we have a pretty good, you know, pretty good schedule now. And so I think we're in a pretty good place. And so we will, I think, by having that March eligibility application, that will move everything up so that we are, you know, more ready for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. But Nick and I spoke as well about this year, and we hope we'll have just kind of a placeholder for now. And then we'll have to catch up with the warrant committee as, and you as well. Once we get those specifics from the applicants, because right now we don't have the specifics. There's a lot of conditions and things on the applications.
Others, if there are none, Rob, again, thank you very kindly. We appreciate the time to be with us and just wishes of the holiday season to you and yours as well.
You as well. Thanks, guys. Thanks, everyone.
We turn to item number five on our agenda, which is discussion approval, February town, a special town meeting date, timeline, and warrant articles, the first of which is relative to the school building committee. We'll have an updated discussion, potential one article related to the school project in the purchase of the Fontbon Convent. And for this, we will have Sean O'Rourke, Chair of the School Building Committee, joining us. He's being moved up as a panelist at the present time.
Sean, welcome. Good evening. How are you? If, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share my screen for a brief presentation.
Please do.
Okay. And just let me know when that comes through. You're ready. Okay. Thank you. So I, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of give a brief update for the school building committee and kind of where we're at right now. You know, currently, our grade enrollment from latest NASDAQ numbers that we have now, you know, still shows a rebound from, you know, the decline that we experienced during COVID, which was kind of expected. You know, currently, the district is operating essentially an entire grade level above what we have for capacity. The capacity that was shown here is basically the yellow dash line. And that represents, excuse me, that represents the existing building capacities that we have in the town between the elementary schools. So the reason we're, we're meeting tonight is, you know, basically to discuss the site selection for what the school building committee has been looking at. Up to this point, you know, we, we've been working towards essentially a parallel path between our options of Gou Road, which I think everyone's well aware of, and the Fontbon Convent. In respects to Gou Road, we engaged BSC Engineering Group to do some survey work and some additional delineations of wetlands there, along with the redesign of Gou Road and, and the work associated with that. To this point to today, we haven't received the final documentations for that. And because of that leading into the special town meeting in February, we don't feel we're ready to proceed with that as an option to, to work forward on that special town meeting. Again, mainly due to the lack of documentation or final documentation. So what we are looking to do is, you know, go forward, you know, similar to what we're talking about is a parallel path with the purchase of the Fontbon Convent. The convent right now, as some of you are aware, became available or, or known to us in the fall of this year. And we've been working diligently with the town to develop essentially a request for proposals so that we can enter negotiations with the realtor for the purchase of this property. The RFP was issued, Fontbon did respond to it. And we, we received that response, I believe it was yesterday. And, you know, we're working through that right now. So for those of you, you know, just for graphical purposes, what this means is the currently existing grade configuration of the town right now is what you see here. Singular High School, Singular Middle School, and then four elementary schools. And the elementary schools are a mix of kindergarten and pre-kindergarten up to fifth grade. With the purchase of Fontbon, our intent is to develop an early childhood education center. And by doing that, we'd be housing all the pre-kindergarten, in kindergarten classrooms of the, of the district, essentially stripping them from the elementary schools and alleviating some of the overcrowding that we, we experienced there. The thing to note that's different for this one, as opposed to what we, what we proposed to Gou Road is the middle school will still house three grade configurations. And as we noted in previous presentations, you know, this is something we want to keep an eye on, essentially to address most likely in the future as we do this. The site at which Fontbon sits on, you know, it, it's roughly about a three and a half acre site. The back portion shown in green right here are essentially wetlands that occur on the backside of the property. And they extend out, you know, around the property, basically making a portion of the property essentially difficult to develop. But we do have the frontage of the property and the abutting sides that go over towards Fontbon. As, as we looked inside the building, you know, the building is basically has, you know, it, it's a dormitory for, 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 for nuns, essentially a convent. And as you look down the wings, you know, the bedroom spaces are about eighteen feet deep. There's a common hallway of about six feet. And then on the other side of the hallway is another bedroom about eighteen feet deep. So on these wings of the building that go out, that's kind of the configuration. And what we tried to do is look at that and figure out, you know, how do we fit classrooms in here? So as we took, you know, a typical kindergarten classroom, which is about twenty-five by fifty feet wide, we looked at that in there and, you know, started, started understanding within this space, there are, you know, limitations for what we can do, you know, essentially working around the existing walls and infrastructure that's there. Our committees worked with, you know, the construction professionals that are on our committee, Glenn Hoffman, who's a local architect, Scott Terrashack, Tim Lombard, a, a number of other construction professionals outside of myself. And we've looked at this and basically, you know, come to the conclusion on our own that, you know, this building is going to require extensive renovation to make it to what we need it to be to house an early childhood education center. But we still believe it's, it's an option that we're exploring. So, you know, as we look at this, you know, the question that came up was, you know, how many classrooms do we need to, to accommodate in here? The two thousand nineteen study by DRA Architecture showed that we needed twenty-six classrooms. So we, we've done some internal investigations and trying to figure out exactly what we need there. And then, you know, we were weighing those, you know, against the costs of acquisition, the renovation cost, and then potentially the, those costs of, you know, expanding the middle school at some point in the future. But essentially where we're at as a committee right now, we have reached back out to DRA Architecture. We, we, we've reached out to them essentially for an independent feasibility study there, essentially to confirm the goals and objectives of what we want to do with this building to essentially make sure there's no fatal flaws. They're going to develop conceptual educational programs, they're going to go to the site, look at it. We have been working internally on our internal, our own internal cost estimating, but they're also going to provide similar numbers that we can compare against. And then they're going to present these findings, you know, publicly with the school committee and most likely with this board. So, you know, for, for tonight, we just wanted to bring this board up to speed of kind of where we're at as a committee. And we're moving forward to, towards February town meeting. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Hey Sean, questions in the Select Book, please, or comments? Ms. Musto and then Mr. Wells.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. You said twenty-six classrooms. What's the breakdown on the pre-K versus the K classrooms?
Yep. So kindergarten right now is, I believe, nineteen classrooms and pre-kindergarten would be seven classrooms.
Okay. And I, my second question would be, so it sounds like you're also still looking at the other site for middle school, is that correct?
Correct. So what, what we're still doing, because this one's not a hundred percent locked in, we still need to evaluate the other one as, you know, a backup option for things that are there. You know, my concern is that initial option that we were going with last May, you know, we pushed it off and we're, we're coming up on, you know, this upcoming May, a year later. And I, I just want to make sure that's still an option for our committee.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sean. First off, I just want to, I don't know if I should identify him, but I want to thank the resident who provided the tip that led us to this point where we're at now, as you're aware of Sean, and you're aware of Nick. This was clearly an opportunity that came very quickly and it has moved very quickly. And just if this does come to fruition, you just don't get opportunities like this very often. So I just have two, a quick two points. If, so we go to February twenty-seventh, time to get this passes, just, and Mike Zulus can also, on those finance side, with this, are we going to go to an override to fund this? Or are we going, Sean, is your committee, if we were able to do this, you want to wait to have what the cost for the total project is? And then long-term go for a question on that? I just want to have an idea how we're going to proceed to fund this. Anybody?
Mike, would you want to take that?
Sure. I, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Richard. I, I think the thought right now is that we can't, we can't support, you know, eight, eight and a half million dollar debt in our operating budget.
Right.
So, and, and, and also, you know, we're, this is, this is a property that's on, on the market. So we can't really wait until we have a, have a project completely baked, right? So, so I, I think the thought now is to, is to ask town meeting to approve if, you know, if subject to all the negotiations and what happens in the next few weeks, if town meeting approves it, ask to put it on the, the April ballot for debt exclusion for the purchase price for, for Fontbon. And then, and then come back later with the full amount. And, and, and just a couple of things that, that I think, and Sean, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, the, the benefits, and, and well, first, just to clarify Roxanne's question and Sean's response, my understanding is there's no current plan to go for both of these, right? It's really one or the other, right? And Fontbon solves the preschool and the elementary school problem, which is a significant percentage of the problem right now, right? And so the thought is that if we move forward with Fontbon, it would be cheaper because you're not building a whole building, right? It would, so it would be significantly cheaper and we could move faster. And, you know, a timeline of three to five years might be collapsed to two. So, so that's the hope that, that we could solve a significant percentage of the problem in, in a more cost-effective way, in a faster way. And then, and then, you know, we'll have to deal with the middle, middle school problem over the next few years as that plays out. But, you know, this, this, I think, this, this gives us an opportunity at least to solve the problem and save some money on the, in doing it on the, on the, on the elementary school side.
Final point, Mr. Chair, do we have to take a vote? Do you need a vote? Or, or I, I see it's on discussion approval, but do we need a motion tonight?
I'm following up on Sean's, one of Sean's closing comments. I don't think we need, well, let me turn to Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a point of clarification, the feasibility study that we're having DRA do will be funded by the School Building Committee along with the School Committee. So, you know, funding from the town, you know, will not be required from this board. So I don't believe you guys would need to take a vote on that.
Okay, right. Nick, any comment?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Michael. And thank, thank you, Sean, for your work on this.
I just wanted to check, and Michael, go back to Nick, any comment from your perspective on Richard's question? I think we're all set for this evening on this particular.
Correct. And warrant articles are due to our office on, on January third, and we have a meeting that night. So any warrant articles related to this, we would bring back to the Select Board at that January third meeting.
Exactly. Thank you. Mike, anything further?
Yeah, and, and item six on the agenda is, is the appraisal. And we can talk about that, but that's, that's, that's an appraisal in order to confirm the purchase price. So if we go to town meeting, we have a basis for the request for funds. So we can talk about that, but that's the only thing that we need, that we would need approval for tonight.
Okay, so why don't, since we're on the school topic, why don't we address that now?
So for the purpose of discussion, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve, except I don't know the amount. Is, is it, is it's, I don't know the appraisal amount, Michael, and you can, I'll take it as a friendly if you want to put it on. I move to approve the appraisal services of the account, the company and the amount. For the Fontbon Convent authorized the town minister to sign the contract on the board's behalf and submit a request to reserve fund transfer to the warrant committee. And whoever wants to put it as a friendly, whatever's missing, I'm fine with.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, Mrs. Zulus.
Yeah, I can tell you the status. We reached out to Landvest and Emmett Loeb, who did the appraisal for the, the property. And what we, we haven't, we expected to, we hoped to receive a, a proposal today, and we didn't receive it today. What we expect is that we're going to get a proposal for less than ten thousand dollars to do a, a consulting appraisal, not a full appraisal report, which would have been more money, but a consulting appraisal confirmation. And so we expect to have that in from Landvest and Emmett Loeb, Emmett Loeb, hopefully tomorrow. But my, my understanding is it would be less than ten thousand dollars. So if we, if we approved it at less than ten thousand dollars for Landvest, then we could go ahead and get started. And, 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 and that's important because if we're going, if we're going to move forward on that, we have to have a basis for knowing whether we're paying too much, right?
And how about Landvest up to ten thousand dollars?
You know, I, I defer to Nick and Kevin on that. I think that would, you know, I think that would do it. But, but I defer to Nick and Kevin on that.
That would be fine by me. Alternatively, you could just authorize me to finalize an agreement with the appraiser at a price we deem reasonable and, and keep it moving forward. You know, I, I don't want to be in a position where it's eleven-five and we still need to go on it. And I don't have that authority. So it's just in, in terms of trying to keep things moving, it'd be a broader authorization for me to finalize an agreement and, and execute it so we can keep this project moving forward.
So from a point of view, Glenn, for what Nick said, that'll be my, my, I'll amend my motion to, so the motion would be to approve the appraisal services of Landvest for an amount to be determined of Fontbon Common to authorize the town manager to sign the contract on an amount to be determined by him on the board's behalf and submit a request for reserve fund transfer to the warrant committee. Am I right with you?
The only question I would have is, do we want to specify Landvest? Or do we want to keep that?
Is there anybody else coming in, Mike? I, I, I wasn't going to put a comment until I heard you say Landvest, so if it's Landvest, this motion, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, they're the only ones I, I've talked to. Nick may have other, other people, so there, there may be others out there. I'm, I'm just not aware of them right now.
Consultant to be determined then by the town administrator.
Thank you. And Mike, basically, our discussion is, are you going to second Mr. Wells' motion?
I, I will do that. I will second.
Move to the seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote then, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Under item number five, the number two warrant article to change treasurer collector position from elected to appointed position, can we call upon Mr. Freitag, who has some recent information from the Massachusetts Secretary of State's office? Kevin, can you join us, please? You're on mute. Not seeing him. I haven't seen him yet. Nick, do you want to give some of the background? We're waiting for Kevin to join on this place.
Sure. So as, you know, the board has discussed, we have been looking at a potential warrant article to change the treasurer collector position from elected to appointed. And Kevin has been researching whether town meeting does indeed need to have a vote again, because the town meeting did vote back in 2018, although the subsequent ballot question was unsuccessful. And we received, Kevin had reached out to the secretary of the Commonwealth's Office, and they responded to the town in writing today, saying that it was in their opinion that it does need to go back through both steps of the required process. So it does need a town meeting vote, followed by a vote at the annual town election.
Hi, it's Kevin. Kevin, were you able to hear Nick?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I missed that part.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, Nick just shared with the select board the report from the office of the Secretary of State regarding their opinion.
Oh, yes.
Thinking that another ballot question vote, that's changed the position would be required under provisions of chapter 41, section 1B.
Yes. Yes, we received notice this, this morning, actually, from Michelle Tassanari, who's in charge of that office, saying that the town meeting vote cannot be reused, essentially, as a predicate to another ballot question. So we need to go back to town meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Freitag or for Mr. Milano, for members of the board?
Well.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I, I think Mr. Freitag mentioned this at a prior meeting, but in order for it to be on the ballot for the annual town election, the town meeting vote needs to be 60 days prior to the election. And so that would require us to move our February town meeting back from February 27th to February 13th.
What's school vacation week? Do we know? Nick?
That is the week of the 20th, which is why we pushed back the two weeks. We were trying to avoid the, the school vacation week, which requires, happens the week of the 20th.
Any further questions on this? There is a proposed motion to approve the change of the day for the special town meeting now scheduled for Monday, February, what, 20, 32?
13th, 27th to the 13th.
Right, from February 27th to Monday, February 13th.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Chair.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr., yes, Mr. Milano, you've asked to be recognized.
Sure. I, I just wanted to note for the board that I did have a conversation with Dave Humphreys to let him know about this. I spoke to the town moderator, and I know that Sean has already been in communication with Dave as well to get his, to get in front of the warrant committee as soon as possible, to keep things moving in terms of the warrant committee's deliberations on any Fontbonne warrant article. And we'll certainly follow up on, on this piece as well with the warrant committee. So just wanted to share that with the board. It is a tight timeline. We'd have to have this warrant done by about January 20th, about 10 to 12 days earlier than we would have otherwise. But we've, we've been in communication with those other committees in, in the past couple of weeks.
Thank you for that update, Nick. And I just want to recognize the high manner in which everybody is trying to maximize communication with all the involved parties, particularly with the tight timeline that you have cited. And keep us on our toes. We don't want to miss a beat on this one because of the tightness. So it has been moved and it has been seconded. Any other comment or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. At this time, relative to the discussion of the treasurer collector position from elected to appointed, we have heard the background from Mr. Freitag and from town administrator Milano. There's a possibility of a proposed motion to change the treasurer collector position from elected to appointed. Any further discussion on that? Is there a motion to move in that direction? Mr. Zulus, you are recognized.
So, Mr. Chair, do you want a motion to include that on the February 13th warrant?
That would be the point, exactly.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to include on the February 13th warrant an article to change the treasurer collected, treasurer collector position from elected to appointed, so that it can appear on the ballot in April.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second to Mr. Zulus' motion? Mr. Wells?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. So I just, just on process. So I know, I knew this a little bit before. So, Mr. McGough is not running for reelection, which means that that position, which is currently elected, is going to become available in April of '23. Regardless of this, someone's gonna have to run, am I correct? So, so someone's gonna run for, or someone may run.
Right.
Legally and politically, someone may draw papers, run for treasurer. Correct? Go ahead, Nick, if you, I think you want to answer this, so.
Yeah, and those discussions, and Nick just prepared on this one as well. Thank you, Nick.
Under the provisions of MGL 411B, which is the process, which sets out the process for this change, as long as there is not an incumbent in a year in which the position is on the ballot, which Milton occurs annually, anybody who's elected to that position on the same day that the ballot question is approved will serve in the position until a permanent appointment is made. So somebody could be elected at the annual town election, and then somebody could be appointed to the position the next day, or could be appointed to the position three months from then, and that elected official will serve, but however long that duration is, assuming that somebody is elected.
Is that only if the ballot question passes?
Correct.
I'm associated, so I see Mike's got his, I'm, I'm listening.
Thanks, Mike. I saw you ruminating, Richard, and I didn't want to give you, I wanted to give you an opportunity to continue, if you wish, but Mike?
I was just gonna say, and, and if, and if no one runs, then the appointment will just take, take effect whenever, it's, I guess it's the same whether, whether someone runs or not. The, the appointment will, and if the, if the ballot, ballot question is approved, then a treasurer will be appointed after that, whether someone runs or not.
Right. I'm just thinking, politically, if someone runs who's very popular, I, I see the two questions working against each other, and that's just, that's just my own thoughts, so. Okay, so what do you need?
No, it's just my, my preference that this was a recommendation previously of the government study committee.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. Just to make sure everybody is. So we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Move to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. I think we're.
What the question, so, Mr. Chair?
Item number six. Anything remaining from that, Nick, that you need?
None at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven. I'd like to turn to Erin, if we could. This is the discussion or an update on the residential outdoor lighting bylaw. Maybe you and Kevin have had some communication on this. So Erin, we turn to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Kevin and I have not had an opportunity to discuss it. I did send him an email about this earlier this week. He was looking into whether or not there was any other cases from 2020 on regarding the outdoor lighting. We just want to make sure that we're putting it in the right place, and we want to make sure that it is something that will ensure that the intent of this article is actually fulfilled. I would like to see this moved for the February town meeting. I've gotten numerous calls from some of our residents who are very concerned about lighting around their neighbors. And so, I know, Mr. Chair, you've had an opportunity to see the language. Kevin has also looked at the language, has had some other of our town officials, or sorry, town employees. And there's been no comments or changes to that. Kevin actually said that the language was pretty good and pretty standard. So we're just waiting to make sure that we are putting it in the right place and that there's no other cases that might knock this out of the way. So hopefully, we'll hear back from Kevin soon, and we'll be able to roll with that.
Would you want then to put this on the January 3rd agenda for a vote, following?
I would love that.
Conference between you and Mr. Freitag?
I would love that. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. So done. Item number eight is procedural, is discussion approval, a contract amendment with Bowler Engineering Massachusetts LLC for surveying wetland delineation and conceptual sketch plans for 40 Highland Street. Nick, can we turn to you for some background on that? I'm sorry, Ms. Musto, we miss you on something?
Yes, I had a question on the previous article.
Please.
The lighting bylaw. I wanted to know, are we gonna be able to discuss the bylaw at the January 3rd meeting? So any questions? We should just save it for that, it sounds like.
It would be for discussion and approval on the agenda for the meeting of the select board on January 3rd, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Nick, going to number eight, having been read, could you provide us a little bit of background on the 40 Highland Street situation?
Sure. This is actually an amendment to an existing contract with Bowler Engineering, who has done some work for the town on wetlands delineation and some conceptual sketch plans elsewhere in, in Milton. 40 Highland Street is the address of the police station, but that, it's that whole parcel that runs along Canton Ave there. And the genesis of this has come out of prolonged conversations related to, you know, lack of space and parking over at the library and as well as master plan work on, you know, the concept of town center and visions for the town center. So the scope of this work would really be to do some topographical work, wetland delineation and conceptual sketch plans to see what, if anything, is feasible on this parcel, which is more or less directly across from the town hall. And, you know, inclusive of potential additional parking that could serve the library. I'll note that we're working kind of big picture on additional parking work in the town center area, but we're gonna wait until the fire station project is complete, and that's kind of out of the way to get a true sense of whether, between the council on aging, town hall, the library, the churches and the other institutions that are in that town center area to try to work on resolving and improving the parking situation there. But this specifically is for that parcel directly across from town hall. Try to figure out in terms of town land what is feasible on that site. If anything, it's pretty steep, it's wet in places, so maybe the answer is nothing, but maybe there is possibilities for something inclusive of parking or other options. This work would be funded by, out of the MPIC budget, as well as a contribution from the library trustees. And just looking for an approval on the amendment to commence with the work tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. So Ms. Musto's hand, and then Mr. Wells, Roxanne, or was that just continuing?
Yeah.
Mr. Wells?
Oh, obviously, this is a project I know a lot about. I know the property. So I did talk to MPIC a year ago, and I believe to the library as well shortly after that. Just they wanted some historical info that I provide. So you're saying across the town, are you, are you referring to the area where the powder house is now? That historic powder house? Are you referring to the area, so the original driveway in the police station was going to be off of Reeddale Road, and that is a wooded area, actually the sewer and water connections to 40 Highland Street coming off of Reeddale, not off of Canton Ave. Is it that area there, Nick? Are you just looking to find anything in that area of wooded that might potentially?
Anything broadly in that area, more specifically closer to Canton Ave than closer to Reeddale, if that makes sense.
I'm gonna ask you one last question, which was the last thing that was proposed to me. You're not referring to putting parking on the front lawn of 40 Highland Street, are you? That was a proposal that was suggested.
Interesting.
All right, so if your, if your question is interesting, then that answers my question. So I'm fine. I'm good. I, I, I'll actually make the motion, Mr. Chair, to, to approve the contract amendment to Beeler Engineering Mass LLC for surveying wetlands delineation and conceptual sketch plans for 40 Highland Street and authorize the town administrator to sign on the board's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second to the motion, please?
I'll second that.
Musto, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus? That was a yes, Mike. I heard, saw, rather.
Sorry, yes, sorry.
Well, I think you had an hour. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number five is discussion approval extension of the local historic district study committee and reappointment of members. The local historic district committee is wrapping up its work. It will have a recommendation for town meeting as required. It has to go through several processes by statute, and then probably some follow-up work concluding its charge following the town meeting. So this motion would provide an opportunity for that local historic study committee deadline to be extended to June 30th, 2023. And I would entertain a motion to that effect, please.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm going to extend the deadline of the local historic district study committee to June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And can comments into that, so that there's a parallelism in time? There'd be a recommendation to extend the terms of appointment for the following four members of the local historic district committee to June 30th, 2023, Larry Lawfer, its chair, Ryan McLean, William Mullin, and Mallory Walsh.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint the following members of the local historic district study committee for Larry Law, Lawfer, Ryan McLean, William S. Mullin, and Mary Walsh for term ending June 30th, 2023?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, thank you. Item number 10 on our agenda is discussion approval of the Mass Department of Transportation response to the town of Milton letter a guiding proposed project at Route 28, Van Gogh Avenue in Chicken Tarbat Road. Mr. Milano, could we turn to you, please?
Sure. As I shared with you, and we've also posted on the town website, Mass DUT did send a letter to the town noting that they received our letter, but that they need additional time to respond. So just wanted to inquire to see if there's anything at this time in the board you would like us to do. We can certainly follow up administratively outside of a formal letter, or, or if the board would like to do something more formal. something more formal to kind of keep the Mass D O T paying attention to the town's comments. I'm happy to do that as well. So that was the intention of including this on the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Comments, questions for members of the board, please? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the only thing we could do is just to let them know we like the response. You know, we wanted it by, you know, what, December second or somewhere around there? Perhaps we perhaps we respond either formally or informally saying we appreciate you know, you need for more time. Could you please have it to us by January thirty-first? Anyway, some kind of timeline for them to rather than just kind of leaving it hanging.
Mr. Wells?
So following up on Mr. Zulus's comments, how about if we have Ms. Milano reach out directly and speak with Mass Dot and based on what he comes back to us with on the, let's say, on the third, be prepared to move something more formal if we have to at that time. Would that be acceptable to the members?
I see affirmation by an honor fence. And we will place it on the agenda for our meeting of January third. Thank you. Item number eleven, discussion approval, authorize the town administrators to submit an application and executive agreements for grant and loan assistance for the lead service line inventory and replacement program.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize, I'll make the motion then for the purpose of discussion, you can go from there. I move to authorize the town administrator to submit an application, execute agreements for the grant and loan assistance for the lead service line inventory.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second that will lead us then to discussion, please?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It's moved and seconded. Mr. Milano, you are recognized for some background information on this, please.
Sure, this is more administrative than anything. As you know, this is approved at the annual town, at the special town meeting, excuse me, earlier this month, that would allow us to authorize debt for this project. Now we are finalizing the application that sort of authorized the application be submitted and be to execute any agreements that we receive. A three up to three hundred thousand dollars for a lead service line inventory and replacement plan that if we complete within the timeline would be, the project would be paid entirely by the grant. I appreciate it.
And that was the amount approved by town meeting. Seeing no hands for discussion, it's moved and seconded, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Cinemus. Number twelve. Discussion approval equity and justice for all advisory committee report mailing to town meeting members. We had discussions of this at our December five meeting of the select board. And at this time, I would like to recommend authorization of the drafting of a transmit letter for distribution agree for it. Mr. Zulus, you and I have had a discussion of this. Would you be willing to take that charge?
Sure.
Thank you. So we have, Mr. Wells?
So I know I made a motion at the last, so I was just for the purpose of discussion, I was going to move to draft a transmit letter for the distribution of the report and anything else. If that's enough.
Yeah, and and that is the second motion. So the first one.
Let me go.
To draft.
I'll do the first, yeah, so I'll do the, I'll do both. The first is to move to authorize the town. No, that's not it. There's two motion? I only see one.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on, I'm on a side of paper this night. I forgot I did this today. And then move to request the town moderator provide the equity and justice committee ask equity and justice for all committee time at the February special town meeting and to make a presentation report.
Okay, well, let's take that motion then, go back to the earlier motion. So it's been made by Mr. Wells and he has agreed to offer the communication to the moderator. Is there a second to Mr. Wells' motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. And then we'll go back to the authorization of the drafting of the transfer letter for distribution of the report, which was to be distributed to town meeting members. And we said that we would do that for January nineteenth, I believe, if I recall. So is there a motion to do so?
If you make that as a motion, Mr. Chair, I'll gladly second that. What you just stated.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number thirteen, and this is where we're going to obtain a considerable amount of time on Finance Committee chaired by Mr. Zulus along with the member of Bradley. So, Mr. Zulus, can we turn to you, please, for item number thirteen, discussion approval, select board finance committee report, and we have a series of items under there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we'll do our best to make this an abbreviated significant report. This morning, Ms. Bradley and I met, yesterday, Ms. Bradley and I met with the finance committee of the school committee, along with the superintendent and assistant superintendent for business and Mr. Milano and and Ms. Dexter as well, and discussed the school budget in broad strokes. They have not had a budget approved yet by the school committee. That is anticipated for January fourth, which is the day after our January third meeting. So our our expectation is that our second meeting in January will have budget books from the the school committee and will have the number that has been voted by the school committee for the school budget. It appears that if the school committee votes along the lines of what the finance committee was discussing yesterday morning, it appears that this will lead to a deficit that we will have to address. This, not not just this, but the entire budget for FY twenty-four, including the other departments as well. Today, Ms. Bradley and I met with Ms. Milano, Ms. Dexter again, Ms. Fagan, who was also at the meeting yesterday, to talk in more depth about these items. For FY twenty-four, which is subpart A to item thirteen. Essentially, as I just mentioned, we expect the school committee will vote on their budget on January fourth, and then we'll have a full picture of the of the budget, but we expect there to be a deficit that we'll have to, that we'll have to deal with. And subpart B, FY, and Mr. Milano can supplement and Ms. Bradley certainly can supplement all of these, but I'm just going to tick through them very quickly. FY twenty-three closeout. The FY twenty-three close has been completed and everything has been submitted to the Department of Revenue so that we can get a certification of free cash, which not only closes out FY twenty-three, but lends insight into what we can do in FY twenty-four. But we have heard from the Department of Revenue not to expect a free cash certification until late January, although Mr. Milano is going to do his best to see if he can convince them to do that faster. That has nothing to do with Milton, apparently has to do with staffing at the Department of Revenue. That's better than last year. I think they were later than end of January last year, so hopefully they can, they can, we can get that sooner rather than later. American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding status and projects we have available to us for funding items on the county side, about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, on the town side, about fifty-five thousand dollars. Mr. Milano and the town government are trying to have an item, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of an item, about five hundred thousand dollars of an item, a water project item that we funded from the town side. He's trying to have that, see if that can be funded through the county side so that we have more flexibility in using that five hundred thousand dollars. If that five hundred thousand dollars is on the town side or on the county side, we have more flexibility in doing that. So Mr. Milano was following up on that. And there are there are there are no specific proposals yet on additional funding, but but certainly that may, we may have some discussions about those funds with respect to the FY twenty-four budget, I anticipate as well. FY twenty, February two thousand twenty-three, bond issuance and debt service and future borrowings. This is subpart D of item thirteen. The headline there is that money costs a lot more than it did in the past. Interest rates are high. This is no news to anyone out there. But that could cause some additional debt service, some additional pressure on our on our budget. And so we need to, we need to watch that and and plan for that. And we'll know more about that in in February when we, when we have our next bond issuance. Subpart E, financial policies. We, Ms. Bradley and I reviewed this morning a, and other post-employment benefits liability policy, which sets goals for funding of our other post-employment benefits trust, both in the short term and goals for larger amounts beginning in FY twenty-seven after our retirement system, contributory retirement system, has reached full funding. At that time, once our contributory retirement system reaches full funding, which is anticipated in FY twenty-seven, we will have approximately five million dollars available to us that has been funded in our budgets because of the needs of our contributory retirement system. Question is what to do with those funds. There has been discussion over the years that we need to, we have this other looming liability, which is other post-employment benefits. That is a much more significant, at this time, much more significant number. And so this policy sets out goals for for using approximately half of that amount, two point five million dollars as a minimum to start trying to fund this unfunded liability and increasing two point five percent per year to fund the other post-employment liability trust. This, these are goals. These aren't mandated by the policy. These are goals. We recognize, I think Ms. Bradley and I had the discussion with Mr. Milano and Ms. Dexter that that every year is different, and there may be years that we can't meet the goal, or maybe years that we can exceed the goal, but those are goals in order to try to get our OPEB, other post-employment benefits liability trust funded. If we proceed under this policy, we will be able to get that funded, I believe, in around twenty sixty-two or twenty fifty-seven. And and so that's the goal of the policy. Ms. Bradley and I approved the policy this morning. We recognize that this board only received it today and we don't have that on for a first reading today. Our hope is to put it on for a first reader on January third and to put it on for a second reading and potential approval on January sixteenth in advance of Mr. Milano's meeting with Standard and Poor on January nineteenth? Or nineteenth, I believe. The goal is to have this policy in place before we meet with the ratings agencies because it would be a benefit to us to have this policy in place and it would be a nice positive for the town prior to the discussion with the Wall Street ratings agencies. And then finally, item app, discussion approval, the departmental budget request. We do have the departmental budgets. They are primarily rollover budgets at this point with rolling over with contractual requirements. And they are indicating some other needs as well. But the, what Ms. Bradley and I suggested this morning was that we would, as in the past, recommend that this board approve the budget in total rather than in segments because things could change, both on the revenue side and the expense side between now and February, March. So so our recommendation is to kind of not rather, even though we have some departmental budgets now, not to go ahead and approve now, wait till we have the big picture, the whole picture, and then approve that. So that's my summary. Sorry, I ran off at the mouth and please fill in where I misstated or mistook things.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, very much. Ms. Bradley, any augmentation?
The only thing I would augment is that we're hoping to get it passed on January seventeenth, not the sixteenth. But that's it. Mr. Zulus did a great job and I have nothing more to add. All the time to take up.
Mr. Milano, anything to add?
Nope, not at this time. Thank you.
So we do not need any motion this evening on this item? You're right, January sixteen is a holiday. And we'll be taking a look later on in the agenda as to the meeting, county schedule for the seventeen. At this time, let us move to agenda item number fourteen. This is a refresh round, yeah, select board retreat. We had at that retreat among the items discussed, an extended discussion relative to other items of of strategic planning. Discuss some things that other communities are doing. We know that there's a long history of strategic planning in the town of Milton's with the schools began in two thousand and four and coincidentally, having been co-chair of that, I met by happenstance the other co-chair, Greg Hall, is a professor Bentley University, now retired, but being called upon by the university to continue his service and I serve on a board with a gentleman who has served for a number of years as a member of the strategic planning for the school committee, which morphed out of the long-range planning committee that was first initiated primarily under the leadership of Bryn Lovely when he was chair of the school committee. We have seen from a little bit of research, work that has been done with other communities and based upon our discussion at the retreat and in combination with at least one of the other items, but there would be several items that might be involved in this. The other item being economic development. We would like to see authorization from the school, yeah, right, as a pass that from the select board at this time to authorize the chair and the town administrator to develop a strategic planning framework for the select board inclusive of economic development for review by the select board at a subsequent, a date to be determined. That's the background. That's the proposal. Are there any? Well, I guess we would need a motion to move in that direction.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to move the strategic planning process.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Thanks, Lexin. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? By roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you. Nick and I will be pulling up our sleeves after the person here to begin some homework after that. Item number fifteen, committee appointments, discussion update. This is the review process for volunteer appointments This is the review process for volunteer appointments to boards and committees, and we turn to Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto for an update and an idea of the timeline on this, or a wrap-up report from both of you. Who would like to take the lead?
Go ahead, Roxanne. Why don't you lead this off?
Sure. So we had, we were supposed to meet, I think, last month. It didn't, we weren't able to meet that particular day. There was a conflict. We're hoping to finish this up within the next, I guess, two or three months, really. I mean, by the time we meet again and go through a few more things. So we're hopeful. I mean, you know, we're just getting through the holidays right now, so I haven't talked to Erin to figure out a time yet, so we'll figure out a time.
Okay, good. I turn to Ms. Bradley at this point.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I've been working on the Boards and Committees handbook. I've been using, as I said before, other towns' templates, so there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. We just need to make sure that all of our spokes are the right ones in there. That should be going out to folks probably at the beginning of the year. I have it on my calendar to get it completed during Christmas vacation week, trying to get it done before I go back to class. So that will be going not only to the, the board and committee, but also to, to the folks that came to our first meeting, which would be the town clerks, the moderator, which I'm still, we're still waiting on an email regarding that, and obviously, Mr. Milano. And then, according to Mr. Freitag, at that first meeting, he stated that that handbook would just have to go through the policy committee, so, Mr. Chair, that's you and I. So we will be teed up to do that once we get all the input from the pre-mentioned folks around the table to make sure that that handbook is all squared away. I'm also working on the notes, which I'm, as I said to Mr. Zulus earlier today, it's on my agenda to do meeting notes regarding the select board for tomorrow. So I should have the meeting notes done for that. There's only been two meetings thus far, so, and one of them has already been taken by Suzanne, so I really only have one meeting to do. So I hope to have that done tomorrow, and I'll get that out to Ms. Musto and the other Mr. Milano. And that's it. That's kind of where we stand, so hopefully, you know, we can schedule a meeting after the first of the year, and we can get the input from those folks that I mentioned earlier and get that handbook on over to you and I, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you. Ms. Musto, you had your hand raised. Do you continue?
Sure. So with regards to the handbook, so Ms. Bradley and I are going to be reviewing it. She's going to bring a few things forward. We're going to discuss that. And then we'll go through that, and we have a few other things we're going to do. I know that Mr. Milano got the grant, I believe, for the website. So that will be exciting to be able to update all of that information as well. So I would anticipate, you know, as was said earlier, that our subcommittee should be meeting sometime after the first of the year. We'll plan a time for that and go over a few things with that. Thank you.
Let me ask, it's a fair amount of work that's been defined. Turn the corner on this, obviously, an important corner. Would it be fair to ask if the select board might receive a final report with recommendations by the end of February? Would that be reasonable?
I think it is.
I don't see why not, Mr. Chair. I think that that's a great timeline. I plan on doing the finishing off the Boards and Committees handbooks. The twenty-ninth and the thirtieth is what it's scheduled in my, my book. So hopefully, we can get responses back from folks right after that. And then it's just up to you and I, Mr. Chair, to, to get that moved through the policy committee. So I think, you know, middle of February, other February is an adequate timeline for us to, to complete that charge.
Great. That'd be wonderful, and this way you communicate what your timeline would be to other parties who are involved as well, so that they have an understanding of the schedule under which you're working.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and just I would say that we're going to plan a time to meet and go over that before we submit it over to the policy committee. So we had to give us ample time to get answers, and for Ms. Bradley and I to meet to go over that, too. Thank you.
Great. I appreciate all of both of you are doing on this and the others who are participating with you. Item number sixteen, discussion approval, select board meeting format, in-person slash hybrid or remote meetings. And at our last meeting, we had a bit of a discussion about this, and Mr. Zulus, you recognize.
Thank you. I just want to recognize, I think Mr. Wells is in the attending group, so I think he needs to be moved up.
Thank you for that. He asked. Let's show on monitor.
Thank you. I'm back. I'm in there now.
Great.
Yeah.
Welcome back, and thanks, Mike. Okay, so this time we're on item number sixteen. We had a little bit of a discussion about this at our last meeting, and the question is how we want to proceed with our meetings wrapped of the first of the year. We have a proposed motion on the floor. I don't know that we need a motion. We could do this by consensus if we wish, start off the first of the year with a January third meeting, in-person, hybrid, quote, close quote.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair. I can't raise my hand on my phone. Just a, my only point is, I think, as we enter the winter, we just need to, I think, Mr. Zulus, as much as we can get into being a person, we should, and just if COVID spikes, then we'll address it as we have to.
Right, exactly.
We just try to get back on track.
And that's one of the reasons I wanted to move away from a motion per se, so that we don't lock ourselves in and we have a degree of flexibility. I know that I have a brother-in-law and a nephew in New Jersey who both have come down with COVID in the past week. I have a son and a daughter-in-law, and they're four children living nearby who have come down with COVID in the past week. So we can't anticipate that this has gone away, and we're coming up on a holiday season. So we have to be realistic. But we have an affirmation to move to this for our January third meeting, circumstances allowing. How is that for including comment on it?
COA, Mr. Chair, we're going to go to the council agent?
Yes, that would be our location for the meeting. It is wired for hybrid. That room, the Cronin Room and the Blut Conference Room are the three facilities in town that give us that type of capability at the present time. Is that correct, Nick?
Yes, that's right. Those are the three that are capable. Blut and Cronin are probably more preferable for Milton Access TV in terms of just the equipment that is in those two rooms, but those are the three that are able to do.
Do you have a particular recommendation, Nick? I know we've had some meetings in the Cronin Conference Room recently. What would you suggest for the January third meeting?
Let me connect with Milton Access this week and next week, and just flesh out what they think is best. Cronin worked well for warrant committee, so let me just confirm with them on that piece and, and see, you know, kind of what works, and I'll circle back with you.
Okay, Mr. Zulus.
Mr. Chair, it sounds like there's someone who's not so wild about Mr. Milano's recommendation. Someone in his room who's not so wild about what he's suggesting.
Have to ask him at least once a meeting, right?
Anybody we know?
Mr. Zulus wants to go back to those days. He's missing them.
Okay. Any further comment? Here he's at. Let's move to item number seventeen, and this is discussion approval of the meeting minutes for November one, two thousand and twenty-two, November four, two thousand and twenty-two, and November fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two. We've had some comments, and those are appreciated. Is there a motion to accept these minutes, please?
Sure, I'll make the motion, move to approve the, the meeting minutes for November first, November fourth, and November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any comment or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Our town administrator, report number eighteen on the agenda. Nick, any updates?
No, I just did, I shouldn't mention, and I know I emailed you, and Chief Madden did as well, but Deputy Chief Ryan Linehan is retiring. His last official day is January fourth. He's been with the town for almost forty years and was, became deputy chief in August nineteen ninety-two. So thanks to Deputy Chief Linehan for his long service to the town of Milton.
And thanks, too, for that recognition, Richard.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Brian and I came on not too far apart. We actually went to Milton High School. He's younger than me. He's a couple of years behind me. Brian, like myself, is a second generation. He followed his father's footsteps in Milton Fire, as I did by, in the police, is both his sons are firefighters now. And Brian was president for some pretty serious days in this town over the past thirty, almost forty years, and don't know.
We've lost you, Richard.
That's Brian to you, and happy new year. Thank you for all your service to the town.
Thank you. And I, I had an opportunity in the past couple of years to see him on site in a fire situation and his leadership capabilities, and want to join you in recognizing him for his contributions and his high standard of performance. Future meeting dates, we're all set with January three. We have Governor Stoughton trustees meeting on January ten, and we're going to be changing a little bit of the format as we move ahead on the Governor Stoughton trustees with a separate postings, both when they are standalone and when they are in conjunction with select board meetings, as they are really well-related, independent of meetings. And then January seventeenth, which is a Tuesday, and there's a question as to any availabilities or conflicts on that date. How do we stand, Nick, on the seventeenth?
So this one, I won't speak for Erin, I guess, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. As I said earlier to both Mr. Milano and Mr. Zulus, I will not be at the meeting on the seventeenth. The sixteenth is a holiday, and I have Monday classes on the seventeenth, so I will not be there. I'm sorry about that.
So your professors have co-opted you?
They have. They're making me, make it up, is what they're doing.
Okay.
That's fine. I completely understand, and I'll read up on the minutes. I'll watch it on Milton Access TV.
So we'll stand firm on the seventeenth at this time. Thank you.
I think, what, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
No, I think I, Mr. Milano, when I talked today, I believe I have a conflict on the seventeenth as well, that I will not be available at all that day. So he proposed either the eighteenth, or, Nick, you can give me, whatever two dates, the alternates, I'm fine with either one. If you want to go back to that, I don't know.
Okay, so we're back to calendars. The eighteenth is a Wednesday. Ms. Bradley, how are you on the eighteenth or the nineteenth?
I will not be at either of those, Mr. Chair, because I will be in class. I, my only day again free is the, is the Tuesdays, except when there's a holiday, it seems, on that Monday.
And Mr. Wells, are you still, yeah, there you are, Richard. You're okay on the eighteenth and the nineteenth?
Not the nineteenth, definitely the eighteenth. The nineteenth was on the second day. I'm not sure. I just can't recall. Nick proposed two dates to me this afternoon, and I said I was fine with either one of them. If he wants to weigh in on what the second one is.
Yeah, we had just discussed whether it made sense to just offer out the following Tuesday, since we knew that worked, and I know Ms. Musto's work schedule is tricky for Wednesdays as well. So I had mentioned the twenty-fourth, which would be the following Tuesday. I'll just note that we do have a number of, not a number, a couple of business items related to both the special town meeting and potentially that OPEB policy, that we may seek to have potentially a business meeting on the select board, and maybe we can find an alternative day and time to do that. If a night meeting on the seventeenth, sounds like it might not be, you have full attendance of the full board, because we'll need to approve the warrant shortly before going to printing on the twentieth. So there'll be a couple of action items that need to meet a certain deadline around that time in January.
Yes, Richard, you are not available at any time on the seventeenth, correct?
No, I don't, I don't not believe it at all, from what I described to Mr. Milano today, do not believe I'm available at all on that day. So what I would say is, the business, the business is true. I could definitely do the eighteenth.
Okay, and Roxanne just indicated the eighteenth is her preference.
They can make it work.
Mike, would that be okay with your calendar? All right. And it's okay with mine as well, so let us go, Nick, with the date of Wednesday, January eighteenth.
Okay, Mr. Chair, one, one, one more point for you. I mentioned this to Mr. Milano today. I think you should probably schedule for attendance only on the sixteenth. As you may recall, Milton Interfaith usually does host a townwide MLK celebration at West Concord Baptist. And I know it may be a little early. Nick hasn't gotten it yet, but we probably should keep a placeholder there just to be prepared for that, that day.
It's an excellent point. We had a request already for me to participate. That came through Lynn today, and I'll be calling Lisa tomorrow to confirm my availability. And a proclamation has been requested from the select board, which we could firm up.
You'll need to put that on for the tenth, yeah, you'll need to put that up for the tenth.
Are we missing?
No, I just want to remind you, I, I mentioned that to, we'll need to vote that proclamation probably.
On the third. That's correct. So we'll have it on the agenda for the third. Perfect. Thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Item number twenty-two. Discussion approval memorandum of agreement with the Milton Library Association, July one, two thousand and twenty-two, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you, please, for this?
Sorry, sure. I, we had discussed this memorandum of agreement in our short meeting for the annual, special town meeting, excuse me, earlier this month. The Milton Library Association did ratify that agreement unchanged. So, you know, obviously, we can enter into an executive session, discuss it if members would like. Alternatively, if everybody is okay with the agreement, as, as I summarized it in our last meeting, it could be approved at this point, and it would be executed by myself and made official with both parties having ratified.
Thank you for that, Mr. Milano. Is there then a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Milton Library Association, July one, two thousand and twenty-two, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five? Yes, Ms. Musto?
Hi, I just wanted to remind everybody that I did file a disclosure form as my son's a library trustee.
And thank you for that reminder. That does not preclude your voting on this, though, correct?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. So we're back to the question of a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, as you just read.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus, will you second it?
I, I will. I am. I will, and I am. Whatever you say. Yes, sir.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Almost a tie there on the motion.
Sorry.
I hate to toss a coin. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. With that action, we do not need to entertain agenda item twenty-three this evening. So that will allow us to go into agenda item twenty-four, executive session, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one A, subsection sixty, "Consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located at nine thirty Brook Road, Bonbon Convent." So I will move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located at nine thirty Brook Road, Bonbon Convent, Assistant Saint Joseph, based on my belief, a discussion- Bonbon Convent, Assistant Saint Joseph. Based on my belief, a discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. The select board will adjourn from executive session at the conclusion of this item of business. And then I'll just note that following the adjournment of the select board, it will, if, as the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust will convene for that purpose. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Bradley, you recognized?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm not raising my hand to second this. I'm raising my hand because we skipped items nineteen and twenty of the agenda, one of which we went right from the town administrators into the next piece, so we missed the chair's report and we missed the comment to the public comment section.
Thank you. The chair did not have any thing to report at that time? And let me turn to public comment response. Is that what you wish to address, Ms. Bradley?
I just didn't want to skip any numbers, so that I wanted to make sure that it was official and that if anybody came and asked what happened, we have a record of you saying that you have nothing to report.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Nobody have, has anything on number?
No.
Twenty? Okay, so we'll move back then to the motion that's on the floor and seek a second.
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 I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Zulus, you won that time. This moved and seconded. Any discussion? Say again, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, but for the purposes of the notes, Mr. Chair, I'm about to step into something where I would not be alone, so I'm going to not participate in this executive session, but I would vote yes.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Mr. Zulus, is your hand still up or did you wish to speak?
Just, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. You may be addressing this, but just for the public, just we may want to indicate that we will be coming back to the trustees of, into public session for the trustees of Governor Stoughton meeting.
That is correct. Yeah, thank you for that follow-up. Okay, so this time we can exit from this meeting, going into executive session, and then we can return to the Governor Stoughton meeting on this platform. So Mr. Milano had sent another platform out for us for the executive session meeting, and we'll be going to that platform for that purpose. Anything?
Thank you for calling to order the meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Trust. Just a reminder that the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Trust are the select board members for the town of Milton. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving this year's chair. Other introductions?
Mike Zulus, vice chair.
Aaron Bradley, member.
Roxanne Musto, member.
Nick.
Nicholas Malano, town administrator.
And Lynn.
Indianapolis Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
And we have with us Kevin Freitag, Town Council. Okay, Nick, could we turn to you for item number two, the update on the Governor's Stoughton Trust Fund financials?
Sure. Earlier this week, I asked the treasurer for an update on the balance in the Governor's Stoughton Trust fund. Based on the information he gave me, as of the mid-December, there's $5,473,108 in that fund. Of that balance, $350,000 was the payments to the town for the easement, and $5 million was the payment to the town for the land from Pulte. So we've been using as the expendable portion anything over and above $5,350,000, which would be approximately $123,000 at this time.
Nick, can you repeat that first number again, please, for me? How much is in there now?
Oh, sure. Sorry. And my math's wrong, anyway. So $5,473,108. And the endowment balance of the $5 million plus the $350,000 would give you 5.35 million, $5,350,000.
And the difference between that $5,350,000 and the $5,473 is $123,000. And that is, as you were saying, the discretionary money before the trustees at the present time.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Malano on that? We have a request from the Milton Residents' Fund for calendar year 2023. Nick, could you let us do that, please?
Sure. Andrew Maloney and Noreen Dolan are here from the Milton Residents' Fund and had submitted both a request in writing and had asked to attend. I shared the materials that Noreen sent in with a little bit of history and background for you to consider. And I know that this is, some of you are a little more familiar because she does make an annual task that she does to provide that information and then come to speak to the board. So, Noreen and Andrew here.
Thank you. Welcome. Noreen, can we turn to you?
Yes. Hello. Thank you for having us. And I also appreciate how speedy you were because I was starting to nod off. So, yes, the president of our trustees of the Milton Residents' Fund, Andrew Maloney, is here with me for moral support and any questions you all have for him as well. So, yes, I sent a document to Mr. Malano and some recent spend down. I know Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto are kind of new to hearing my spiel to this. I think Mr. Doyle, Mr. Zulus have heard it a couple of times. But just to give a little recap, the Milton Residents' Fund is kind of how I describe the umbrella that oversees several different funds within that. There's the Henry B. Martin Fund and the Martin Swift Fund that are, I can use them for annual and quarterly grants for residents of Milton. And then I have the Milton Residents' Fund that I can use, like community donations, the Governor's Stoughton funds, Copeland Family Foundation has given funds, different donations go into that general Milton Residents' Fund general pot that I can use to support Milton residents. All three of those funds are restricted to Milton residents only. And just kind of looking through my numbers for calendar year 2022, we had 394 financial requests come into Milton Residents' Fund through Milton Public Schools, through Quincy Q cap fuel assistance referrals, through the Town Hall, through the Department of Health. So different various or self-referrals come through. Thirty percent of those requests were able to be fulfilled through the Governor's Stoughton Trust. It feels exceptionally vital to have the support of the select board and the Governor's Stoughton trustees in order to fulfill these needs. Personally, I do worry, you know, as if funds do dwindle how to meet the needs of Milton residents. Looking at the demographics of who we serve this year in '22, we had 101 adults age 19 to 61, 96, 94 adults over age 62. We had 100 children age 0 to 4, 98 children age 5 to 12, and 96 older youth 13 to 18. So the requests really fall in several main categories. Stabilizing housing, so families that have a notice to quit for eviction or a significant reason behind in rent due to like a medical emergency, unpaid work, but now they're back at work and they need help catching up. So if they have the documentation to show kind of cause and effect or the notice to quit, people's rental subsidies at risk for future long-term housing stability if they don't get stabilized. A significant amount of their requests are coming in for heating assistance. So I certainly refer residents to Q cap in Quincy for the official fuel assistance program. But even with that benefit, that usually helps with one to two months of heating assistance. They need one to two months of Milton Residents' Fund assistance to make it through the winter. And these are families that I really don't see any other option for them where if they didn't get help from Governor Stoughton and from the Residents' Fund, a good number of people would be flat out without heat. And I'm reviewing their financial situation and their bank accounts and their income. Lots of electric shut-offs right now. We're in a winter moratorium where all residents can't get shut off during the winter months if the electricity has any connection to their heat. But as soon as the winter moratorium ends, usually around March, all the shut-off notices go out. And before, in the fall, I was seeing shut-off notices for $150,000 up to, you know, $4,000, $5,000. So it really, they do try to shut people off before the winter and not to call anyone the bad guy, but they're trying to collect their money and families are just really struggling. A lot of, through the Governor's Stoughton and the trustees in the past, we've been allowed to use the Stoughton funds to help pay for park and rec camps for Milton youth whose parents are financially struggling and need to maintain employment. So that's been extremely helpful. I know park and rec works really hard to keep costs, just the prices cover the cost. But otherwise, there's no other financial aid. So without the Governor's Stoughton support, a lot of kids would not have been able to attend park and rec, and the parents wouldn't have been able to maintain employment. So that was really important. I've seen a lot of the requests this year. Medical issues, I'd say for the parents, mental health, anxiety, depression, COVID, other medical concerns that make it hard to maintain employment or lose employment, which then sets everything back and, you know, unpaid leave, things like that, and causing significant challenges for keeping utilities on. A little part of my fund from unrestricted dollars from the community, I can sometimes help with small car repair bills so that somebody can maintain employment or medical or educational advancement. If there's some certificate program or some fee to make it to the next kind of professional level, we can look into things like that. And eyeglasses or sneakers for children or cleats to participate or small sports fees. I really am concerned about Milton youth not being able to participate in town basketball because of, say, a $90 fee or things like that. So trying to figure out from community donations. So that's all kind of the financial picture, and I don't want to waste too much time on you all. But my last kind of comment on that would be the holiday program that we are just hopefully wrapping up now. Working really closely with the Milton Public Schools and huge shout out to Marty McKenna from the Milton Public Schools and her fantastic work as a family liaison and our partnership with my brother's keeper in Easton. So we had 90 families apply this year, 124 adults and 201 children asked for help at the holidays. We were able to do, you know, toys and everything for the kids, and then the Milton Residents' Fund focused on snow boots, winter coats, clothing, you know, dishes, blankets, like other things that the families needed. And then we got different gift cards and grocery cards. And another huge shout out to the Milton Community Food Pantry because they collected a lot of the applications and made sure to get food and holiday stuff for those families. So really kind of trying to meet all the needs in the winter December time. And in terms of finances, as you saw from my document, we have now spent out all the Governor's Stoughton grants that you also gratefully provided to us. We had spent out all the Copeland funds for 2022 and received a small gift from them for a good gift from them for '23. But looking to see how do we stabilize the fund to meet the needs in the new year. So I just ran the numbers while I was listening to the Select Board meeting, and it looks like to date I've provided 230,000 of assistance to Milton residents so far this year. And it's hard to guess from every year, but I would, you know, wager that about, you know, 240,000, 250,000 will be needed to meet the requests, reasonable requests in the new year. So I can reasonably count on maybe 130,000 of community support, Copeland Family Foundation, other donors, large and small in town, different funds. But I am, maybe unfortunately for you, hoping for a sizable support from the Stoughton funds. To be honest, it would look like maybe 100 or 110,000, and obviously that is a huge portion of your discretionary money. So I don't know what other requests you have. But it looks like that might be the needed amount to meet the projected needs for the new year. Fuel costs alone, as I'm sure you know, the oil prices, and they've come down a little bit, thankfully. But providing tanks of oil to Milton residents has been, you know, eight or 900 per fill-up. So I can, I can hush now and answer any questions if any of you have or anything that I can help provide clarity for.
Arthur, are you muted?
Well, sure. Thank you for calling to order the meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Trust. Just a reminder that the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Trust are the select board members for the town of Milton. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving this year's chair. Other introductions?
Mike Zulus, vice chair.
Aaron Bradley, member.
Roxanne Musto, member.
Nick.
Nicholas Malano, town administrator.
And Lynn.
Indianapolis Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
And we have with us Kevin Freitag, Town Council. Okay, Nick, could we turn to you for item number two, the update on the Governor's Stoughton Trust Fund financials?
Sure. Earlier this week, I asked the treasurer for an update on the balance in the Governor's Stoughton Trust fund. Based on the information he gave me, as of the mid-December, there's $5,473,108 in that fund. Of that balance, $350,000 was the payments to the town for the easement and $5 million was the payment to the town for the land from Pulte. So we've been using as the expendable portion anything over and above $5,350,000, which would be approximately $123,000 at this time.
Nick, can you repeat that first number again, please, for me? How much is in there now?
Oh, sure. Sorry. And my math's wrong, anyway. So $5,473,108. And the endowment balance of the $5 million plus the $350,000 would give you 5.35 million, $5,350,000.
And the difference between that, $5,350,000 and the $5,473 is $123,000. And that is, as you were saying, the discretionary money before the trustees at the present time.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Malano on that? We have a request from the Milton Residents' Fund for calendar year 2023. Nick, could you let us do that, please?
Sure. Andrew Maloney and Noreen Dolan are here from the Milton Residents' Fund and had submitted both a request in writing and had asked to attend. I shared the materials that Noreen sent in with a little bit of history and background for you to consider. And I know that this is, some of you are a little more familiar because she does make an annual task that she does to provide that information and then come to speak to the board. So, Noreen and Andrew here.
Thank you. You're welcome. Noreen, can we turn to you?
Yes. Hello. Thank you for having us. And I also appreciate how speedy you were because I was starting to nod off. So, so, yes, the president of our trustees of the Milton Residents' Fund, Andrew Maloney, is here with me for moral support and any questions you all have for him as well. So, yes, I sent a document to Mr. Malano and some recent spend down. I know Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto are kind of new to hearing my spiel to this. I think Mr. Doyle, Mr. Zulus have heard it a couple of times. But just to give a little recap, the Milton Residents' Fund is kind of how I describe the umbrella that oversees several different funds within that. There's the Henry B. Martin Fund and the Martin Swift Fund that are, I can use them for annual and quarterly grants for residents of Milton. And then I have the Milton Residents' Fund that I can use, like community donations, the Governor's Stoughton funds, Copeland Family Foundation has given funds, different donations go into that general Milton Residents' Fund general pot that I can use to support Milton residents. All three of those funds are restricted to Milton residents only. And just kind of looking through my numbers for calendar year 2022, we had 394 financial requests come into Milton Residents' Fund through Milton Public Schools, through Quincy Q cap fuel assistance referrals, through the Town Hall, through the Department of Health. So different various or self-referrals come through. Thirty percent of those requests were able to be fulfilled through the Governor's Stoughton Trust. It feels exceptionally vital to have the support of the select board and the Governor's Stoughton trustees in order to fulfill these needs. Personally, I do worry, you know, as if funds do dwindle how to meet the needs of Milton residents. Looking at the demographics of who we serve this year in '22, we had 101 adults age 19 to 61, 96, 94 adults over age 62. We had 100 children age 0 to 4, 98 children age 5 to 12, and 96 older youth 13 to 18. So the requests really fall in several main categories. Stabilizing housing, so families that have a notice to quit for eviction or a significant reason behind in rent due to like a medical emergency, unpaid work, but now they're back at work and they need help catching up. So if they have the documentation to show kind of cause and effect or the notice to quit, people's rental subsidies at risk for future long-term housing stability if they don't get stabilized. A significant amount of their requests are coming in for heating assistance. So I certainly refer residents to Q cap in Quincy for the official fuel assistance program. But even with that benefit, that usually helps with one to two months of heating assistance. They need one to two months of Milton Residents' Fund assistance to make it through the winter. And these are families that I really don't see any other option for them where if they didn't get help from Governor Stoughton and from the Residents' Fund, a good number of people would be flat out without heat. And I'm reviewing their financial situation and their bank accounts and their income. Lots of electric shut-offs right now. We're in a winter moratorium where all residents can't get shut off during the winter months if the electricity has any connection to their heat. But as soon as the winter moratorium ends, usually around March, all the shut-off notices go out. And before, in the fall, I was seeing shut-off notices for $150,000 up to, you know, $4,000, $5,000. So it really, they do try to shut people off before the winter and not to call anyone the bad guy, but they're trying to collect their money and families are just really struggling. A lot of, through the Governor's Stoughton and the trustees in the past, we've been allowed to use the Stoughton funds to help pay for park and rec camps for Milton youth whose parents are financially struggling and need to maintain employment. So that's been extremely helpful. I know park and rec works really hard to keep costs, just the prices cover the cost. But otherwise, there's no other financial aid. So without the Governor's Stoughton support, a lot of kids would not have been able to attend park and rec, and the parents wouldn't have been able to maintain employment. So that was really important. I've seen a lot of the requests this year. Medical issues, I'd say for the parents, mental health, anxiety, depression, COVID, other medical concerns that make it hard to maintain employment or lose employment, which then sets everything back and, you know, unpaid leave, things like that, and causing significant challenges for keeping utilities on. A little part of my fund from unrestricted dollars from the community, I can sometimes help with small car repair bills so that somebody can maintain employment or medical or educational advancement. If there's some certificate program or some fee to make it to the next kind of professional level, we can look into things like that. And eyeglasses or sneakers for children or cleats to participate or small sports fees. I really am concerned about Milton youth not being able to participate in town basketball because of, say, a $90 fee or things like that. So trying to figure out from community donations. So that's all kind of the financial picture, and I don't want to waste too much time on you all. But my last kind of comment on that would be the holiday program that we are just hopefully wrapping up now. Working really closely with the Milton Public Schools and huge shout out to Marty McKenna from the Milton Public Schools and her fantastic work as a family liaison and our partnership with my brother's keeper in Easton. So we had 90 families apply this year, 124 adults and 201 children asked for help at the holidays. We were able to do, you know, toys and everything for the kids, and then the Milton Residents' Fund focused on snow boots, winter coats, clothing, you know, dishes, blankets, like other things that the families needed. And then we got different gift cards and grocery cards. And another huge shout out to the Milton Community Food Pantry because they collected a lot of the applications and made sure to get food and holiday stuff for those families. So really kind of trying to meet all the needs in the winter December time. And in terms of finances, as you saw from my document, we have now spent out all the Governor's Stoughton grants that you also gratefully provided to us. We had spent out all the Copeland funds for 2022 and received a small gift from them for, a good gift from them for '23. But looking to see how do we stabilize the fund to meet the needs in the new year. So I just ran the numbers while I was listening to the Select Board meeting, and it looks like to date I've provided 230,000 of assistance to Milton residents so far this year. And it's hard to guess from every year, but I would, you know, wager that about, you know, 240,000, 250,000 will be needed to meet the requests, reasonable requests in the new year. So I can reasonably count on maybe 130,000 of community support, Copeland Family Foundation, other donors, large and small in town, different funds. But I am, maybe unfortunately for you, hoping for a sizable support from the Stoughton funds. To be honest, it would look like maybe 100 or 110,000, and obviously that is a huge portion of your discretionary money. So I don't know what other requests you have. But it looks like that might be the needed amount to meet the projected needs for the new year. Fuel costs alone, as I'm sure you know, the oil prices, they've come down a little bit, thankfully. But providing tanks of oil to Milton residents has been, you know, 800 or 900 per fill-up. So I can, I can hush now and answer any questions if any of you have or anything that I can help provide clarity for.
Arthur, are you muted?
Well, sure. You were. Thank you again, Noreen. And I just wanted, before we go to Roxanne and Mike, turn to Andrew and see if you had any comments that you wanted to add.
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you for your past generosity and
large and small in town, different funds. But I am, maybe unfortunately for you, hoping for a sizable support from the Stoughton Funds. To be honest, it would look like maybe a hundred or a hundred and ten thousand. And obviously, that is a huge portion of your discretionary money. So I don't know what other requests you have. But it looks like that might be the needed amount to meet the projected needs for the new year. Fuel costs alone, as I'm sure you know, the oil prices, they've come down a little bit, thankfully. But providing tanks of oil to Milton residents has been, you know, eight or nine hundred per fill-up. So I can, I can hush now and answer any questions if any of you have or anything that I can help provide clarity for.
Arthur, are you muted?
What should it, you were? Thank you again, Noreen. And I just wanted, before we go to Roxanne and Mike, turn to Andrew and see if you had any comments that you wanted to add.
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you for your past generosity. And just want to add, what a fabulous social worker we have in the person of Noreen Dolan who succeeded Diane Ferrari and Sherri Dolgin. We've been on this task for about seventy years. And Noreen has really, the first thirty or forty, we sort of did it informally around First Parish. But Noreen has really reached out into the community to secure other ways to raise money to give to needy folks in Milton. As she mentioned, she's recalibrated the holiday gift program and is really very well connected to the school resource officers in town, all of the ministers in and around town with folks on the police department. So we're really thrilled with the work that she does. And I'd just add, finally, that the First Parish in Milton, the Henry B. Martin Fund, and the Swift Charity are three distinct legal entities who provide the initial caseload, the quarterly grant that Noreen referred to a few minutes ago. They also provide a hundred percent of her salary and office expenses. So the money that we can raise from other entities around town, a hundred percent of that money gets to people who need it. There's no administrative burden or cost in any of that. So I just wanted to point that out and thank you again for your past generosity and for your time this evening.
And we also want to recognize your role and most of your colleagues.
Thank you.
Roxanne, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank both of you for coming tonight and for explaining more about the fund and how this all works. I wanted to compliment you. I think that you're doing a very good job. These are tough times for a lot of people. And as somebody who I work in healthcare, I see a lot of what's going on in the different levels. So I appreciate everything that you're doing, and I think you're really doing great work. And I think unfortunately, the need will be higher this year just on, you know, the economic factors of what's going on in the economy and with fuel and food costs, all of that in, you know, job insecurity and so forth. So again, I really want to compliment both of you. You're doing a great job. Thank you. Great service for the community.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Noreen and Andrew, for the presentation and for all you do. I just have a question about the calculation. You're anticipating a need of two hundred and fifty thousand. You're anticipating a hundred and thirty thousand from other sources. So it seems to me you need a hundred and twenty thousand from us.
Yeah.
In order to meet the need. And that falls just under our, what we have. So, and I can think of no better way to meet the needs of the Governor Stoughton Fund in this, in this time period than, than making sure that you're fully funded. So, so anyway, so I, I guess the question is, would you take a hundred and twenty if we, if we, if we, if we, if we went in that direction?
Yes, I certainly would. Yeah, because I was like running the numbers and I'm like, my best guess would be a hundred and forty to a hundred, I mean, two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty thousand needed. And I think I have about a hundred and thirty worth of donations that I can count on from the community. So yes, it would be about a hundred and twenty. So I hate to ask for more than, than I need. But based on the government COVID programs kind of rolling back, it seems like this is the need that we will have.
So Mike, is that a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to appropriate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the Governor Stoughton Fund to the Milton Residence Fund. And I'll just say to Noreen, in my job, when we have companies and businesses that are seeking funding, you always need to ask, you always need more than you think you're going to need. So ask for the higher number.
I know. I'm a social worker. I'm not used to asking for money.
Erin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will second Mr. Zulus's motion. And then if I can say a few words, if that's okay.
Your second is acknowledged, and you have the floor.
Thanks so much. It's a real pleasure to meet you, Noreen, through the computer screen and you, Andrew. I really appreciate all that you do. I'm up at the senior center. Usually once a month, I help seniors with applications. And this month was so bad that Katie and Christine asked me back twice this month to do lie heap applications. So I work directly with Q cap. I go to seniors' homes and I gather the paperwork because many of our seniors are homebound and can't get out. So, so it's the need in Milton. People always laugh because they're like, oh, Milton is such a rich town. And I said, I've got more clients from Milton than I do in the surrounding areas. And the need for fuel assistance right now is so enormous that I will probably be doing two seconds again at the council in Adrian in January and in February. So, because the numbers are just, that my, my time is just being flipped so fast. So I know that there's also the hunger cliff that is coming. And I just, I'm curious, Noreen, what's, what are, how many of the families that you're dealing with are hunger, food unstable and rely on those SNAP benefits, especially the extra two fifty that the feds are paying right now?
Yeah, I know I'm on the board of the Milton Community Food Pantry and they, you know, maybe we're having fifty, sixty families a week. And now they're consistently having ninety to a hundred visit every time they're open. So it's, it's significant. I mean, I am very impressed with, with their, you know, efforts. And they're giving grocery gift cards to go, you know, get fresh meat and milk and eggs. And then they have fresh produce and different staples. And then every one of the clients that I work with is also receiving SNAP benefits, you know, making sure that they're getting the food assistance. And they certainly are benefiting greatly from the increased kind of COVID rate, and they're hitting the food pantry. And then I'm referring Q cap food pantry in Quincy, Interfaith, I want to say, or there's another food pantry. So trying to stretch it out. And then it's really helpful that the Milton Public Schools is able to offer the free children breakfast and lunch this year. To my understanding, with the, with the farm bill, that will go away at the end of this year, which will, will be hard on families. But right now, people are making it with all those options. And then they're still calling me to say, you know, do you have any extra gift cards? And so any holiday gift cards that I got to Shaw's or whatever, you know, they're twenty-five dollars at a time having them on hand. A lot of seniors, I've had some calls, like people trying to pick up their medications at a pharmacy or at the grocery store and don't have the money to pick it up. And so are calling to say, could I write a check to them for twenty-five dollars so they can pick up their medication? And one was a seizure medication that they weren't able to pick up. So I know in the beginning days of COVID, I was, normally I wouldn't write a check to, directly to a client. It would be to pay a bill. But there was sort of like a three hundred dollar emergency grant to somebody that they could use for like some food and some medicine, things like that, that you'll see on the Stoughton report for any other category. So I think food is still a stretch now, and we have all these resources. As the school food rolls back, it's, it's going to be tough in the summer and beyond. But yeah, trying to, the fuel, the lights and the heat are constant and food is a concern. And yeah, people with subsidy, you know, I worked in affordable housing for a long time, you know, and so I get very worried if someone does lose a subsidy because they didn't pay their portion for a month or two. You will never get back on that list, and the wait lists are, you know, fifteen years long. And Milton already, affordable housing is a question on people's minds. So, yeah, just trying to stabilize. We have wonderful school system with really great, you know, IEP and support for children. And the parents are working really hard to keep their children stabilized after such a stressful last couple of years. So I know your work and I know your name is probably from the children's trust and the work that you've done. So I.
That's a blast for the past. Yeah.
Yeah.
So nice to meet you, Noreen. We'll have to get together in person.
And just, if you're working, if you're at the COA doing applications to the, the town has a new social worker.
I know.
Yeah. So she's lovely. And I met with her. So she would be a great resource, too. Might be of help with applications. So.
Yeah. And I only do seniors. We're under an AARP foundation grant. So I'm just helping the seniors who need that extra, you know, it's a lot of paperwork. You've seen it. So, but it's great to meet you. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to schedule some time offline.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right, great. Thanks so much. And thank you both for what you do.
Thank you.
Andrew, you're muted?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted, just to say thank you for your generosity and your continued support. We appreciate your help as do many folks in Milton.
Well, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? We want to make that a reality for you, Andrew. Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, it's unanimous. Thank you very, very much. And if there's any, are there any questions that you have for us before we adjourn that you'd like us to consider? And then I'll turn to Mr. Malano, the town administrator.
Um, no, I mean, I know in the past, like the use of the funds for park and rec and summer camp, to all the current ways I've used the money, does that still feel correct to you all? And if it doesn't, you can also now or later advise me. Because I think it has been extremely useful for camp. So I know in the past, it was like one-off requests, but I, it was broadly approved by previous select board or Governor Stoughton trustees. So, yeah, if there's any questions and concerns of the categories that the money's used for, certainly let me know.
Thank you very much. Mr. Malano?
No, I just wanted to thank Noreen for her help. And we did, I did ask her for information to put on our website. And we've done that. We've updated select board page with the dedicated Milton Residence Fund page just to make sure that, you know, folks are aware that can more easily find it. And we'll make sure it's at a prominent location when we, when we reboot, when we revamp the website, excuse me. The current page, the current site is a little bit harder to kind of prioritize items and where you want things. So just wanted to thank her for her time and assistance with doing so.
Thank you for that, Nick.
Great. And do I follow up with somebody in particular or somebody will follow up with me after the meeting?
Well, they're coming up with you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
The check is in the mail, as they say.
Yeah, the requests are coming in, so I will, I will. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you. And happy holidays to both of you and to those who serve.
And happy holidays to you.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Other than to note, a meeting that will be forthcoming on January the tenth. I would like to ask each of the trustees, as well as Mr. Malano, to submit items for that agenda so that we have a very substantive and meaningful business meeting, looking at the future directions of the Governor's Stoughton Trust, how we want to organize, and how we want to conduct our business in the interest of those intended to be served by the trust. So on that note, I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Roxanne. All in favor, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you. Good night, everyone, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Night. Thank you.